Good evening. Today is Monday, June 11th, 2018, and this is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first item is to have a moment of silence for Mrs. Lorna Grant, an EC Teacher Assistant at Harold E. Winkler Middle School, who passed away on May 27th. Please join me. Thank you. We'll start with our opening ceremony with a presentation of colors presented by the Combined Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets. Please rise.
All right. Halt. Left. Haste. Present. Arms.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose rush'd eyes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
All right. Arms. Right. Haste. Forward. Arms.
If the course would like to wait a moment, I'll introduce them. Okay. Please be seated. So presenting the colors today, as we said, was a combined unit of Air Force Junior ROTC candidates. First, we had Cadet Senior Airman Jimena Diaz, Cadet Captain from J.M. Robinson High School; Cadet Captain Eric Lozano from Mount Pleasant High School; Cadet First Lieutenant Leah Wise from Mount Pleasant High School; and Cadet Senior Airman Brianna Leonard-Lott from Northwest Cabarrus High School. From the A.T. Allen Elementary School Course, we have Garrett Collins, Taylor Bost, Sophia Chase, Macy Missler, and Jaylen Rivers. Thank you all for being here tonight, and enjoy your summer. And I should say that the course was under the direction of Chelsea Singer from A.T. Allen. Thank you. I'd like to welcome our SRO tonight, Deputy Barrier from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Thank you for being here. Board members, it's time to set the agenda, and I will take a motion that we amend the agenda. We have one item that needs to move from action, from consent to action, Policy 3640/5130 regarding student voter registration and preregistration. I'd like to modify the agenda and move that from 9.01 to a new item 10.025. Do you have a motion for that?
Second.
So we have Dr. Kirk making the motion to amend. And Mr. Sheemaker? Mr. Harrison. I can never...
Me, too.
Second to that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0. And we need to now adopt the agenda with the modification as presented, or have a motion to adopt the agenda as newly amended. Mr. Walter and Mr. Sheemaker made the motions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 6-0. Okay, and we'll move into recognitions. We'll first have Mr. Tim Vaughn join us, and Mrs. Glenda Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Tonight, we will recognize our final Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for the 2017-18 school year. We're so very appreciative of Mr. Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and commitment to this recognition program for our teachers. So for the final time this school year, we say thank you, and just really appreciate what you continue to do for our teachers. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for June is Megan Allman. Mrs. Allman, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. And I do want to ask Ms. Angel Elefant to come forward as our Director of Elementary Education. She is here to represent school administration tonight. You can bring all of them up with you.
There's a lot of them. We've got three kids here and everything else.
Megan Allman is an exceptional children's teacher at Pitt School Road. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote. Mrs. Allman goes beyond her job description to ensure her students are learning in a safe, loving environment. Our child has thrived under her instruction, and I am always moved at how much my child enjoys interacting with her. I am in awe as I see the love she has for each student and the compassion she shows daily. With a nonverbal child, it is difficult not to be able to ask how their day was. Mrs. Allman always sends pictures so that we don't miss out on those special moments like sharing a banana with my child, to comforting her when she is not feeling her best. This parent concluded the nomination with, "Miss Allman does it all. She is more than a teacher. She is a nurse, counselor, therapist, playmate, friend, second mother, and my child's biggest cheerleader." Mrs. Allman, thank you for being so much more than a teacher to your students and their families. Congratulations on receiving the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. Please allow Mr. Vaughn to present you with your award, and then give our board members an opportunity to congratulate you.
Thank you. Our next item is for Fine Arts Honors. We have Dr. Crystal Hill to present those.
Good evening, Ms. Furtinbaugh, members of the board. We are super excited to honor our middle school chorus this afternoon. Would the members of the C.C. Griffin Middle School Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Marla Young, please come forward. Is C.C. Griffin here? Okay, I will read their award. This is for the 6th, 7th Grade and 8th Grade Chorus. Both groups received a superior score in performance and sight reading at their music performance adjudication event. This is the first time both groups received straight superiors in all areas. Can we please give C.C. Griffin Middle School a hand? Next, we have J.N. Freeze Middle School, under the direction of Mr. Daryl Godinez. Would you please come forward? We have two individuals receiving this award. We have Noah Haberacker, am I saying that correctly? Who's in 8th Grade, and Hans Kegel, who's in 7th Grade. Hans and Noah were selected to represent J.N. Freeze Middle School and Cabarrus County Schools at the Middle School All-State Honors Chorus in Greensboro on April 20th and 21st. They performed in a concert with the best performers from around the state. Congratulations, Noah and Hans.
I think we should have had a performance tonight. Next year, mark that on the calendar.
Next, we have Mary Elizabeth Morgan from Cox Mill High School, under the instruction of Courtney Lehman. If they are here, will you please come forward? Mary Elizabeth Morgan, who's a senior, just graduated, right? Who is a graduate of Cox Mill High School. Thank you for coming back. Mary Elizabeth's artistic piece, "Flight," was selected by the Superintendent's Office to be displayed permanently at the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Office in Raleigh, North Carolina. Congratulations, Mary Elizabeth.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Next, we'll have Dr. Mary Beth Roth for the North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities Middle School Forensics Tournament Champion.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Would you have several recognitions for state champions?
This evening, first, I'd like to ask Shreya Shondai from Concord Middle School to come forward. We'd like to recognize Shreya for being the Middle School Forensic Tournament State Champion for extemporaneous speaking this school year. Congratulations.
What was your topic? Okay, so three prompts?
Yeah.
Incredible. Congratulations. Mary Beth, would you have him just come to the mic? To, Shreya, would you say what your topics were there for your three speeches? I just think it's very interesting.
So I had three topics that I present seven-minute speeches on. My first round topic was regarding North Korea and how recent events in the U.S. have affected relations with them. My second round was cybersecurity in general, just around the world, and my third round was immigration globally.
Excellent. I'd like to ask Akshar Patel and Jayden Brown from J.N. Freeze Middle School to come forward. These two young men were the regional and state Math Fair Champions. Congratulations.
Hey, let me get a picture, guys. I missed it. I missed my opportunity. I was getting a picture of the artwork. Stay a little closer together. There we go. All right, awesome. Gotcha.
Now, I'd like to ask the following students and advisor to come forward. Shree Elia Paramal, Akshar Patel, you can come back up here, Jayden Brown, and Campbell Depkin, and their advisor, Chris Campbell. And Mrs. Bullock is going to stand in as the administrator. These students were the NCA SA State Writing Competition Quill Team Champions. Congratulations from J.N. Freeze Magnet School.
I know, that's amazing. Wait till we see his SAT and ACT scores, huh? That's incredible. Congratulations. Great job. That's awesome. The two championships. Good job. Congratulations. Okay, so Dr. Roth, you're finished with yours? Okay, now we have the North Carolina Technology Student Association Flight Champion.
Good evening. Would Abby Eisenhower and her family and any staff from Mount Pleasant Middle School, please come forward? While she's coming up here, I'll read a little bit about the TSA. The Technology Student Association is a national organization of students engaged in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. TSA is open to students currently enrolled in or who have completed technology education courses. TSA's membership includes over 233,000 middle and high school students around the country. There's approximately 2,000 schools and also spanning 49 states. This year's TSA conference was held in Greensboro, North Carolina, April 11th through the 13th. One of the events is called the Flight Challenge. In this event, participants study the principles of flight and design in order to fabricate a glider that stays in flight for the greatest elapsed time. The glider must be designed so that it can be launched from a catapult that is provided on-site. The design process is documented in a portfolio that is submitted for evaluation. Zach Trivid is the advisor for the TSA Club at Mount Pleasant Middle School, and this year's first-place winner at the state level in the Flight Challenge is Abby Eisenhower from Mount Pleasant Middle School.
And our next recognition is for our own Teacher of the Year Board Representative, Mrs. Paige Norris. Would you step down to the front? Paige, you need to come get on the line.
Paige Norris, the current Cabarrus County Schools 2017-18 Teacher of the Year, began her teaching career with CCS in 2006 as a language facilitator in the Oral Deaf Program. This experience, combined with her passion for children and education, inspired her to become an elementary school teacher. In 2011, Norris fulfilled her dream of becoming a kindergarten teacher and began her teaching career at Pitt School Road Elementary School. In 2014, Norris transferred to Rocky River Elementary School. She earned a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, so I learned she was a Tar Heel, as well as a graduate certificate in elementary education from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. In addition to her leadership in the classroom, Norris serves as a mentor for graduate students at UNCC and is a school improvement team representative for kindergarten, the grade-level chair for kindergarten, and the professional development leader and co-leader in several areas at both the school and county levels. Through the Miriam and Robert Hayes Charitable Trust, Paige will be traveling to China June 16th through June 27th with several other educators throughout North Carolina with the Center for International Understanding. This experience will allow Paige an opportunity to learn more about China's history, culture, and education system, as well as explore global challenges and develop potential partnerships with other schools. And she'll be recruiting for us as well. Stephanie Baucham, the 2017-18 Opportunity School Teacher of the Year, will be traveling with Paige as well. This evening, we would like to thank Paige Norris for serving as the teacher representative on the Cabarrus County Board of Education for the 2017-18 school year. Paige's service to Cabarrus County Schools is invaluable, and we thank Paige for her commitment to education and the students of Cabarrus County Schools. And at this time, administration, we'd like to present you with just a small token of our appreciation. And you noticed the Arts Council, right? Because we want to support our local arts program. So here you go, Paige, and thank you.
We will do hugs after, too. Well, I wanted to just take a moment, and if any of the board members want to chime in as well, to thank Paige for participating even on some difficult and delicate issues. Her opinion was invaluable. And sometimes it was discussions before meetings or after meetings, but those when we called on her to speak, she handled it with grace and knowledge and gave us great insight. So appreciate that. Any other board members' comments?
Well, I want to echo the same sentiments on that, that we do appreciate that. And that's one reason that years ago, we decided to put a teacher liaison on the board that is very helpful when we can get the words and the comments from the teacher, that it helps us to hear from the teachers, to see what their comments may be, because they're on the front lines. They see it firsthand every day, and it helps to hear what you have to say. And you can, you have the eyes and ears in the classroom, and you know what's happening every day, and we appreciate it. And we're gonna miss you, and we're gonna put you back on those front lines. Thanks a lot, Paige.
I'll just echo what I've said before. It's just been amazing to have you here, giving up your time. I mean, every, you're in the classroom all day, yet you take, you come to our meetings and spend hours with us, outside of that, away from your family, and I, you know, I truly appreciate that and your input, and you will be missed.
And the board presented Ms. Norris with a few small gifts before the meeting.
I'm confident that we learn more from you than you learn from us, and your patience and your wisdom has always been highly valued. Thank you.
Okay, so it's time to move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I appreciate so much the, what you've done tonight and what you've done all year. I mean, from the moment I walked in, everybody made me feel so welcome and made me feel like my voice really does matter, and that means a great deal. So I appreciate everything I've learned from all of you, and I appreciate the dedication that you have to our students and teachers and families in Cabarrus County. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to Item 6, the approval of minutes. You have two sets of minutes in board docs for the May 7th work session and May 14th business meeting. And I want to ask, Ms. Monroe, did you get what you needed for the finish of the 14th meetings? Okay, I didn't open them again after that, after I had asked you. Okay, do any comments for the minutes, do you have a motion to approve?
I move for approval of the minutes of May the 7th, 2018, and also of May the 14th of 2018.
Second.
And Dr. Kirk, for a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-0. Next, we have, I'll say, board chair comments, and I just have one thing I wanted to mention. And Dr. Louder is actually with a school in a national championship today. They've already presented, but they won't know the results for a few days yet. So at least they've completed that part. Just from my comments, I just wanted to announce that the Channel 9 School Tools Drive will occur August 1st to August 26th. Mr. Tim Vaughn, who is here for the other presentation, actually is going to be one of the Hillbush Ford, will be one of the drop-off locations. The West Cabarrus YMCA, thank you, Dr. Kirk, for that, will be another. We have about 10 locations. Hillbush Ford, St. James Catholic Church, and we will, Grimsley Jewelry, I'm trying to think of the other ones, Hair Salon, but we will publish all those names. We do have a Facebook page out there. The Afton Sunset Rotary Club is the nonprofit sponsor, and our work will be at the benefit of Cabarrus County Schools and Kannable City Schools. So we're looking forward to that. So when people see their deals on school supplies, please gather them up when you find the deals, and then you'll see the announcements on Channel 9 as well and on their website.
Madam Chair, could I add something?
Yes.
As a parent and with kids in summer school, or summertime, summer camps, and I'm not sure if the word gets out or not too well, but we have several of our schools that offer summer camps for kids that include basketball, soccer, baseball, football, arts, robotics, and a lot of that information, if there's still open seats, I think, on some of those schools. But if you look at the high school websites, specifically like Hickory Ridge, Northwest, Robinson, and Mount Pleasant, all have camps going on this summer that I'm aware of. Just, you know, again, it's an opportunity that if you didn't know about it, we do have camps here at several of our schools over the summertime.
Great point. Ms. Carpenter?
Again, I would just like to say, congratulations to all our graduating seniors. It was a magnificent weekend. I know that all our board members were there, and some of our staff. I think we spent, we just might as well put our sleeping bag at the arena, but it was wonderful. I am so proud, and I know our whole board were of all our seniors. We had some, I mean, the students were magnificent, and we just, I am so proud of our system. I can't say how I am. And when I saw all the scholarships and all the things that our students did, you know, it is just fascinating. But congratulations to all of them, and you parents, too. They couldn't have did it without you. But I just want to say, we, it was a wonderful, wonderful weekend, and again, I just wanted to say congratulations.
Anything else, board members? Okay, we'll move to our guest speaker. In accordance, guest speaker section, in accordance with Board Policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Sign-up will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins. Speakers must sign up with a board clerk no later than the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. Speakers must complete a contact information card, including their name, group if applicable, address and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. The rest of this information is actually in the agenda for additional details. And we have one speaker who has signed up tonight, Mr. Jim Fulton. Okay, you may come forward. Welcome. And you'll have three minutes to share information with us.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Good evening, once again, to members of the board. Tim Louder has just appeared before the county commission and requested $1.5 million to push forward with plans for a new 800-seat school on the McAllister site. The money will come substantially from funds left over from various other construction projects. I would suggest that this money could be well-used and perhaps better spent to conduct a thorough, independent, and unbiased condition assessment and feasibility analysis of Beverly Hills, Coltrane Webb, and McAllister to understand exactly what is wrong with these buildings and what will be required to renovate and maintain them in service. In the first place, this will give the board what is required to make a truly informed and substantive decision regarding renovation cost. In the next place, this analysis will certainly be helpful, if not required, to understand the cost of repurposing when and if these buildings are closed. More than this, however, I can't understand why the board is in such a hurry to close Beverly Hills and build an 800-seat, 100,000-square-foot school that the community really doesn't want and is inappropriate for the McAllister site. The county doesn't have the need or the appetite to build replacement elementary schools, and they have said as much. The demographics are showing zero growth in K-5 until 2028, especially in the Arbrown, Coltrane Webb, and McAllister districts. The need is to fund middle and high schools in the growth areas of the county. So don't overbuild elementary schools. Sustain and renovate them. It makes no sense to close a 400-seat school and then spend $30 million just to gain those seats back at McAllister, which is essentially all you will accomplish with this new school. Pause a minute, take a breath, and gather full and complete information regarding the condition of our schools before rushing pell-mell to close them. Renovation may be a viable option, but I don't know. And the truth is, you don't really know either. What I do know is that we don't need to be in such a hurry. You can't make decisions about these schools that are so important, transformative, and irrevocable with anything less than absolute certainty. So slow down and use the resources available to you to fully understand the problem before you take action. If you have misgivings about moving forward with these closures and feel you need more information, many of us share those feelings. And I'm here to give you the courage of your convictions as you deliberate before your vote on the 28th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, board members, we now have the items that last week we approved to move to the consent agenda. As note, we removed Policy 3640-5130 to action, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So motion.
Okay, Mr. Walter made the motion. Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0. Now we'll go over to the action agenda. 10.01, Regarding the Approval Policy 4700 Student Records on Second Reading. Hello, Mrs. Burns.
Good evening.
Good evening. Are there any questions regarding Policy 4700?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve Policy 4700 as written.
Okay.
Second.
Is that Dr. Kirk?
Yes.
So motion by Mr. Schumaker, second by Dr. Kirk. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion carries 5-1 with Mrs. Carpenter dissenting. So next, we'll move to item 10.02, Approval Policy 5030 Community Use of Facilities on Second Reading.
Madam Chair, do we accept as presented?
Did we get an answer to my question from last week?
What was the, please remind me.
I think we added some, we added a statement under item, what is it? B, A or B? And we didn't add a corresponding statement or D on cost.
Okay, Rob, remind us what section you were in?
I think it's right there on the screen.
I'll second the motion so we can open for discussion.
Okay.
Need the motion?
Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Schumaker made the second.
So has our board attorney reviewed this?
The, I wasn't quite clear on what the question was, but I think the question was, with the addition in Section B of Number 1, polling places on election days in accordance with 163A-1046, should there be something corresponding in Section D stating that there is no charge for the use of polling places? And there is no charge for the use of polling places. We can't charge for that by law. We could add that to the policy if the board wanted to.
We just created a different category, and we didn't address it after that.
Mm-hmm. We could, we could either in B1 amend B1 to say polling places on election days in accordance with 163A-1046, parenz at no charge, close parenz.
I think that's probably the simplest place. Would that be okay, Rob?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just wanted it to be consistent. I didn't want to create confusion by adding something and not creating a new section and not discussing that with the fees will be.
Okay, so if we add at no charge after the 10-1046?
You could do that, yes.
Okay. So now I'll need Mr. Walter to recommend an amendment to the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to incorporate the language that our attorney just gave us.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Walter made the motion to amend the policy. And Mr. Schumaker seconded. All in favor of accepting the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes 6-0. Now we'll go back to the original vote and vote to, take the final vote to approve the policy as amended. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the amendment for item 10.02, Policy 5030 passes 6-0 with the additional parenthetical statement at the end of item 1 on page 1. Okay. The next policy we have is the one we moved from consent to action. That's 3640-5130 Student Voted Registration and Pre-Registration. Okay, so it is actually in, the details are back in the consent agenda with the new attachment.
I can share those if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, it has the blue font. I see it there.
Okay. The legal reference in the last sentence of the policy was changed. The PLS update hadn't been updated yet. So Mr. Schwartz caught that for us. And then the assisting students in the completion of the forms may only be done by board employees. So we added that at the end of, the very last sentence of the policy. It says assisting students in the completion of the forms may only be done by board employees who volunteer to do so.
So any questions on that update?
How would that work? I mean, board employees who volunteer to do so would go to the schools to help students with these forms?
No, no, a board employee is, includes all school employees.
Okay.
Okay. So the principal or designee would handle that at the school level?
The local, yeah.
And ask for volunteers? So they can't be forced to do it? Yeah.
And is this, I believe it said at the age of 16, where it's like a pre-registration? Or at any stage where a child is, young person is legally eligible to register or pre-register?
Yes, it's when they're eligible to, eligible to register or pre-register.
Yes, into the first paragraph there.
Madam Chair, do we accept this policy as modified?
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Kirk. Mr. Harrison made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 6-0. And we will move on to 10.03. Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
Be sure and let Ms. Reimer know it was easy tonight.[1210.66][1210.66](laughter) We'll have Mr. Ben Alred for the approval of the 2018-19 Early College Rowan Cabarrus Community College Memorandum of Understanding.
As you remember.
It's actually MOA, it's not understanding, of agreement.
Good evening. As you remember, last week, Mr. Schwartz recommended some changes. He emailed me those changes. I sent those to the community college. I got an email today at 5:05 saying they're okay with those changes as is. But I didn't know if Mr. Schwartz wanted to take some time. They were emailed too late today. And we got them over the weekend while we were all enjoying graduations. If you want to look at those, Mr. Schwartz, if you want to speak to them.
There are a couple of minor editing changes early on, but the major changes in Section 9.04. And the change was because there are a couple of recent OCR decisions and agreements that were entered into. If we have students who qualify as exceptional children and they're going to the college in a dual enrollment program, we can't simply say that the college is in charge. There has to be communication. We still bear some responsibility. So this is simply adding a provision there, saying that, that there will be, you know, necessary discussion to make sure that those students are, those students' needs are properly addressed and that we understand what's going on with, at the college level, and the college understands what is required based on the students' needs. The last sentence there was to help ensure that each party meets any respective legal obligation. Then the three different parties to the agreement will develop a protocol to ensure adequate communication between the parties regarding each student with a disability who's enrolled and requests an accommodation. We, we could have gone into a whole lot more nuts and bolts about how that will occur or anything, but at this late date in getting approval with three different entities, we thought this covered it. And Ms. Lingeman had no problems saying, we'll figure out a way to do that in accordance with this agreement.
So will this 9.4 section be inserted into the main document, then? Or will it be a separate page?
No, it will be inserted, part of the main document, along with the other changes that are on the.
Dr. Quillen, just in the course of the meeting, inserted it, sent me a redline version. I'll go ahead and get that to Ms. Monroe, and we'll get the requisite signature pages for you and Dr. Louder.
Okay.
So this 9.4 addition will be in addition to what's already stated in 9.4?
Correct.
So it'll be a second, it'll be a continuous paragraph or a second paragraph?
It'll all be embedded in one paragraph.
Okay. Thank you.
Has this already been, how many boards have seen this and signed it? Oftentimes, we're in a tail chase of modifying, modifying, modifying. At what point does the show stop and becomes law?
I think we are good to say it stops here. We got lucky to get, get approval from RCCC today, knowing it was coming to action for you all tonight. Having talked to Dr. Quillen, I'm pretty sure it's, was sent to Rowan Salisbury as it was originally written. He's been communicating with their director of high schools there.
Madam Chair, do we accept that as presented and re-presented and edited?[1422.54][1422.54](laughter)
Thank you, Dr. Kirk.
And I'll second that.
With the very last version of their 9.4.
Yeah. So Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Schumaker seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0. Next, we'll allow Mr. Ben Alred to continue to be on the hot seat for item 10.04 regarding the 2018-19 academic fees.
Last week, you all asked us to be on action, so I'll take any questions you have.
Do these fees go into Fund 8? When you accept any of these fees at school level, where, where does, where do the funds go?
I don't know what Fund 8.
What's the process by which the funds are collected and kept for a while and then dispersed?
No, sir, they, they do not go in Fund 8. They stay at the school level. So the school's general fund account, they would stay in, in that, each individual school's account.
Until they.
Until they disperse.
Until they pay the vendor for the services, in most cases.
Sure, yes. Correct.
And that's indefinitely, or is it a week, a month, all year long? Or they stay in their accounts?
I mean, each one of them would be a little bit different. So the yearbook is generally an annual payment, and so that would go out at one time. The, you know, the AP, it just depends on if they're buying supplies. And so that could be two or three times a year. Each, each fee is going to be a little bit different, and you can address.
So they're truly managing the entire amount until they provide payment to the vendor for that service?
That's exactly what they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are these audited?
Yes, they are.[1533.54][1533.54](laughter)
I mean, I, I, now, don't, don't take me, don't, don't, don't take me wrong. Don't, don't, I mean, because, and, and the reason I'm, now, don't, 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 don't get me wrong. No, but the reason I'm saying is, what, and what happens? Say a child can't pay. Do they have something to say, okay, it's okay, and we've gotten something to, to pay that amount? Or, all right, we're going to have 30 children, and that should be X amount of dollars? Or how do we account for saying, we know how much is, this is going to add up to? When I say audit, you know, I know, I know how particular you are. And so, I mean, how do we audit? How much do we know this is going to generate? And how do we back it out and say, okay, this is what it adds up to, and this is what it is? How do we, how do we actually audit? And what if a child can't pay? How do we take that into consideration?
So if you, at the bottom of the fee structure, there's an asterisk. And consistent with board policy, it says, any fees imposed will be waived or reduced for students who demonstrate real economic hardship. So typically, the way that is, is teachers know their students. Teachers know when there's an economic hardship. Social workers, counselors, et cetera, in the school response to that. We don't withhold instructional materials for that reason. And I wanted to further clarify what the guidance we give. So take any of these fees for the AP. We do not expect or encourage teachers to just simply collect $23 for a fund. That should come in for a very specific item, the maximum of $23, and should not exceed what it actually costs to purchase the material. And it should be as simple, we bought it through the school, and we paid for that item. It's not intended to be any kind of fundraiser or fund for the future. It is to pay for that item that is listed explicitly. That's the intent.
Okay. No, that's.
Okay, again, these aren't all the fees. So I'd like to see by the August board meeting, all these extracurricular fees as well, the field trip, the sports, the clubs, all that stuff as well. If you could do that by August.
Yeah, those, again, Rob, this, as we set up the last meeting, those are not academic fees. So that would not be Ben's purview.
Okay, whoever collects that by the August meeting, I'd like to see a list of those fees, too, because it's our job to make sure these are consistent across the system. And I've never seen those fees either. And I just looked at the policy here, and the policy does say all fees, not just academic fees.
And I would tell you, historically, extracurricular fees have been campus decisions due to some schools want to get warm-ups as a team for a certain thing. They want to get T-shirts, do more competitions, less competitions, so.
Which, which is fine. I just, they just, we can have that discussion. I just never, never seen the fees. And as a board member, I think we're entitled to seeing that and making sure that they, they're consistent.
Well, we, I, what I would suggest is, let's ask staff for an update on the process to review those fees. We're not going to get, going to get to a point where we're approving the minutia occurring at every school.
All right, well, it does say.
For extracurricular.
We're supposed to approve all fees.
What?
It does say in the policy that we are supposed to approve any fees.
Except the extracurricular are optional, so.
Okay, but it'd be nice to at least see that,[1754.01] Okay, but it'd be nice to at least see that, make sure that we're being consistent across our system.
And we had asked, and because, you know, caps and gowns, and one of the things that come up last year was about the high school rings, because I had heard somebody say, "Oh, well, we can get..." Because everybody said that the ones that they usually get them from is the people they order the caps and gowns from. Somebody said, "Oh, well, you can get them so much cheaper from some other..." You know, we've got numerous jewelry stores throughout the county, and they said, "Oh, you can get them so much cheaper." And I know they're pretty well... I mean, they're pretty expensive, and if a child can get them a lot less from somebody else, I didn't know if we'd bid them out. I didn't know what happened. But if they can get them less, I mean, and I didn't know how we did it. I didn't know how it was done, and I didn't know what the price was. So, ever how it's done, or again, I'd like to know how we did it, what's the price of it, and again, what that price is.
And I think that was, excuse me, was handled by Ms. Reimer's department, not by the academic area.
Okay, well, whatever. I don't care.
Yeah.
If you like, Ms. Burns, I can speak to exactly what happened, because we did communicate that to high schools, if you'd like. We did hear that request, so we align all of the days with one of the companies that has been doing that for years. We publish those dates, send it out to those other agencies that request. They have equal access on the initial day when students see that, so there's no, I guess you could say, leg up for one company over the other, so that invitation is out there for them to come.
For everybody.
So, you can imagine the cafeteria at lunch, students get to see one company, two companies, three companies, all on the first day, and we communicate that and align that with those companies.
Okay. Okay, so are we ready to have a motion for approval of the academic fees that's presented?
Madam, so moved.
Is that Mr. Harrison? Okay, Dr. Kirk and Mr.... Made the motion, Dr. Kirk seconded. All in favor of approving the academic fees, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. So, we are going to get a list of the rest of the extracurricular fees?
I will request how they can get that. It's... That's honestly, Rob, it's... We went through this multiple times over the years. It's a difficult thing to put your hands on.
It's a difficult, but it is a required thing. It says, "Each principal must submit a list of any fees to the superintendent by the August board meeting," so that it would include extracurricular or voluntary fees, in my opinion.
Rich, can you just confirm for us, does that include extracurricular activities outside academic?
I have to look at the policy. Do you have the policy, Rob? 4600?
And you can get back to us on that. You don't need to answer right now.
Yeah, give me a minute, and let me look. Okay.
Okay, so now, we have Mr. Rusty Parker for 10.05, the Career and Technical Education Application for State and Federal Funding for 1819.
Good evening.
Are there any updates from what we saw last week?
One thing that I did have was that they're on our federal allotment. It had changed. I think I got it the day I presented.
Okay.
So, as of right now, the federal allotment increased from, I think, 252,000 to 286,000. There was a decrease.
252,000 to 200 and...
It went from 252 to 286,000.
Okay. I know we kind of cut Mr. Parker off last meeting in the interest of time for the public hearing. Would you like to have him go through?
No, is there anything that you wanted to tell us last week that you didn't get a chance to?
[laughing].
Anything the public should know, otherwise, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
I'm not second.
Okay, let's... Let's let Mr. Parker answer Rob's question first. Is there anything you'd like to highlight to us?
Thank you very much for letting me speak last week. It was kind of a whirlwind. I'm glad I was on the agenda, so thank you for that. Thank you very much. One of the things I was going to clear up about the positions that we put in place, there was no increase in allotments or anything on the positions that I had in the PowerPoint. I think there may have been a question come up about rearranging some of the positions. We realigned some of our leadership positions in CTE. So, when you saw special populations, that person was actually an academy coordinator who had that license. We now have work-based learning coordinators, which I really wanted to share with you, because I know we've talked about work-based learning several times. So, now, we have four staff members who their title is now work-based learning coordinators, and that is their focus. And so, now, we're also going to have our career development coordinators working in a feeder pattern position, which I know a lot of times, they've been based strictly out of high school, but from now on, they're going to be in a feeder pattern position, where they'll work for their middle school and also their feeder elementary schools, so which is thrilling for us, so...
Yeah, that's great.
So, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Walter, and we have a second with Dr. Kirk. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the CTE application for state and federal funding for 1819, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, so, Ms. Monroe, the next item is regarding the board budget and board training. Ms. Monroe has nicely put together our history for the past year. I'm glad she keeps track of us, and where we each have earned hours, and I want to congratulate Carolyn on once again exceeding all expectations. Oh, look at that. Yes, you are. David, you are second, and I am... I am a lowly third for the past year.
You're a bunch behind.
As you all know, let me pull up. I want to... I'm not going to be able... I thought I had this saved, and I don't... I'm not going to find it quickly now. We do have... We are legislated to receive 12 training hours every two years. Based on the information we have received, we are... One of our board members is a little short and didn't meet that goal. And Mr. Schwartz, can you please provide us any guidance on what happens if somebody does not meet their goal on training?
They... It is a legal requirement. It is a mandatory legal requirement to get 12 hours of training every two years, including two hours in ethics, within a short time after election or appointment, and the failure to carry out that duty is potentially grounds for removal of a board member.
Madam Chair, could I just take a point of privilege here and compliment Ms. Carpenter on her dedication and the seriousness with which she takes board training? Nobody can hold a candle to Carolyn Carpenter about getting training to serve on this board. She is always... Puts us to shame, but goes to great lengths to know what the heck is involved with all of the scope of a board member, and just, Ms. Carpenter, you amaze me, and I'm very impressed by and jealous of your ability to get all this training. You're doing a great job.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's, you know, we hear over and over about being a continuous learner, and I think that's something that I really take to heart, and I am a continuous learner, and I think you can never... You can never know too much, and it's... And I enjoy it, and I try to get whatever I can get free. You know how I like free, and so I try to get... If it's out there, I'll try to get it for nothing, but I enjoy it, and thank you, David. I appreciate that comment, and so I try to do as much as I can, and so I work very hard, and I take it very serious.
Got any extra credits you want to throw our way?
Your way, we'll just put them, but I work very hard, and I try to share what we can, and I think the more we can be educated, that's what our job is.
Okay, board members, we don't have a vote on this. There's no vote, but I just want to ask if we might have consensus to have Mr. Schwartz advise the board member who's... I'm not sure what the right word, has not met the legal requirements over the past two years.
I'm advising a manager.
Okay. You guys okay with that? If we have Mr. Schwartz talk to Mr. Powell regarding...
Okay.
Following the statute? Okay, so, that is the end of the regular agenda.
One question, how long does he have to complete that?
Mr. Schwartz, he's... You have the two years to complete.
Two years from the time he took the oath of office for the 12 hours?
In every cycle of... Yeah, so this... These last... These two years are really the... Really kind of the third and half of the fourth.
Okay, so he is in violation now, or he's not?
Yeah, he is.
He is.
So, the other thing, and this is really not from the statute standpoint, but North Carolina School Board Association, as many of you know, recognizing boards where everyone receives some training every year and then does a higher recognition if you have all met the statute... Statutory requirements. So, unfortunately, we cannot obtain that recognition in either case for this school year. So, the board will now convene in closed session pursuant to...
Was the ethics training never taken?
That was just the... What's in there is just for the board members who were elected in the last cycle, because you take it every... Mr. Schwartz, is it every election cycle?
Yes.
He needs to get to the ethics training?
Yes.
Yeah, so, Carolyn, when you come back, you'll need to take it in the new year.
Oh, I know that, because I always take it, but did he not... He took it before.
Yeah, but this was... This was only the last two years, not the last four years.
Okay.
So, okay, Mr. Schwartz, I'll start the motion, then I'm going to need you to add